Good evening, and I will call to order the meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem for Monday, January 25th, 2021 to order. If the recorder will please call the roll.
Commissioner Stapleton?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Likewise.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner Leung?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Chair Hoy?
Here.
Commissioner Nordike?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis is absent. Thank you.
Thank you, and if you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Commissioner Stapleton, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No.
Thank you. That takes us to the consent calendar. Commissioner Stapleton, may I have a motion?
Yeah, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Stapleton, seconded by Commissioner Phillips. Any discussion on the consent calendar? Thank you. If the recorder will please call the roll.
Commissioner Stapleton?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Leung?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Nordike?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis is absent. Chair Hoy?
Aye.
Is that everybody?
Yes, that's everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, motion passes unanimously. I see that we have no public hearings and no special orders of business, so that takes us to information reports. And I see Nicole Yutz is here with us. This was just an excellent program report this time, Ms. Yutz. Thank you so much for the detail. And I just kind of wanted to start by saying, wow, it's been a rough six or eight weeks for you in the Housing Authority with so many things happening in so many different places, and you and your staff have just been outstanding, and I just wanted to start by thanking you for that and thanking you for your excellent work. And I was hoping that you would highlight some of the events that you've been dealing with and some of the, a lot of the successes you had, because there have been so many successes over the past several weeks that that I think we just really need to get the information out there so that people understand what's happening.
Great. Good evening. I'm Nicole Yutz. I'm the Housing Administrator for Salem Housing Authority. And we did try to, there's been a lot going on at Salem Housing Authority, and the team has done a great effort of teamwork and collaboration with community partners to make it all keep going and moving smoothly. We did try to highlight some of those just to keep everybody informed on what's happening in the Housing Authority world, and I guess probably one of the biggest things that happened in December was our Robert Lindsay Tower fire, which was, is our 62-unit commercial structure. And it houses over 62 seniors in that building. And thanks to the great work of Salem Fire Department and restoration companies and everybody that came together, we were able to get everybody safe COVID safety distance during that time and quickly get those that were affected by the fire into hotel rooms and in safe locations while we continued to work on the fire. I am happy to report that we're probably about eight. We could potentially be getting eight of those units back earlier than expected. We had reported in here in February. The team has been doing a great job, and we're trying to get them all home here in January of the eight units that were lightly impacted, and then the rest of them will continue to go through, work through probably February and March. We hope to have everybody home in Robert Lindsay Tower by March at the latest. Beyond that, we have received quite a bit of additional voucher funding this last year, and many of those that we applied for, we've received. And we've been able to get 100 notifications out there on, out to individuals that they have come qualified to come in for the voucher program. And we're hoping in the next four weeks to get another 100 individuals notified with good newsletters. That's, that's great for that program because we've been on hold for so long, meeting our max capacity of funding. So we're very pleased to get that money back out into our programs and be able to help more of the community out there. As well as that, this upcoming week, we have our homeless rental assistance team that will be out there doing the pit count, point-in-time count. So they will be working hard and collaborating with partners to ensure we're getting a good count this year and providing some assistance to those in need out on the streets. With that, we have actually been very thankful and grateful to all of the donations from the public that have helped us keep our immediate need station that we keep in our basement of the Robert Lindsay Tower available to the police and fire 24/7 stocked. We've received some wonderful donations, monetary and new and slightly used tents, sleeping bags. We've, we've had a great turnout for that, and we, we are very pleased that we've been able to keep that stockpiled through this winter, keeping everybody out there warm, especially during this flooding season that we've had in the parks and the wetter weather. It's really been very helpful to our team. As well as that, we've been very busy with the Sequoia Crossings Permanent Supportive Housing initiative that our team is involved with, two full days of training every month to ensure that we can learn and absorb as much information to go into this next funding cycle and NOFA opening for the federal funding assistance through Oregon Housing and Community Services that's coming open. Sequoia Crossings is anticipated to be a 70-plus unit permanent supportive housing project in northeast Salem. We've been working diligently with our architects, development teams, to ensure that we have a great package, and we're going to be applying for not only the permanent supportive housing, but as well as the 9%, and that information will be coming to you guys here shortly in the next month for approval. On top of that, Redwood Crossings, which was our permanent supportive housing that we opened during the wildfires, which was another challenge of ours, did end up having, coming down with a COVID outbreak in the late, in December. And we've been cleared and we're leasing again, which is great news. So we hope to have those last eight units filled by the end of February. We're making actually three placements this week, so we're quickly making things happen now that we've been cleared to go ahead with that. We're doing it very cautious. COVID protocols in place, great team, great effort by both Arches and our staff to make sure that everyone is safe in that building. Beyond that, that's it.
That's a lot. That's a lot. Mr. President?
Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you very much. I agree with Commissioner Hoy. This is a fantastic report, and you guys are doing a terrific job. I have a comment and then two questions. My comment is, everything is almost 100% leased up. And, you know, the, it begs the question of what does that tell us about the need in our community? You know, the more units we can put on, the better it is, and, and I applaud your efforts, supported by the council and by other people in the city to do that. My question, I've got two of them. One is I'm looking at attachment two, which is the vouchers, getting back to the vouchers. Why is, I don't know, it's mainstream at Ned? Why is that only 26 and everything else is, is all 26% full? And everything else is near 100%?
So that's a great question. The mainstream is one of the funding monies that we received, and it was a grant funding that we received this last year. With that being said, the regulatory requirements that came with that funding said that we had to go through every single individual on our waiting list currently to ensure, to verify whether they meet the needs of that voucher program. So we actually sent out 5,000 notifications trying to ensure that we don't miss anybody that might qualify for this program. And then we can continue with the leasing process for those. So you'll quickly start seeing the numbers on that grow here pretty quick, but it took some time to get through that many individuals on the current waiting list that we have now.
I'm sure it did. I've got another number I want to ask about, which fortunately is a much, much smaller number. You've got, in the reports, you have people who died when they were housed. I think that might be five, and people who died before placement, which I think is eight, or maybe it's the other way around. I don't ever recall seeing those statistics before. Could you maybe explain a little bit, and is it related to COVID or what happens? Thanks.
Sure. So that information, there was always this question. We tried to revamp this section of the homeless rental assistance program to make sure that it was more easily understood and the numbers calculated out more quickly, even though there's grim information of deaths either being housed or not being housed. That information is important for everyone to know as well, and that was always the missing number that didn't quite calculate, that everybody would ask on a regular basis. Where do these numbers calculate out? So we wanted to ensure that you had a full picture of every individual that is being helped through the homeless rental assistance program. The deaths before placement are not related to COVID, that I, I do not have any reports of any of those being related to COVID. There are various unfortunate circumstances that happened during or prior to us being able to assist them. And then, of course, the deaths while housed. Unfortunately, that's something that we, we deal with on a daily, not daily basis, but on a regular basis at the Housing Authority with as many programs as we have.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Yutz, for your excellent work. Please pass along our congratulations and thanks to your staff. And seeing no further business before the Housing Authority, we are adjourned.
I'm going to call this meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency for January 25th. Let's call the roll.
Board Member Stapleton?
Here.
Board Member Anderson?
Present.
Board Member Phillips?
Here.
Board Member Leung?
Here.
Board Member Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Board Member Hoy?
Here.
Board Member Nordike?
Here.
Board Member Lewis is absent. Chair Bennett?
Here. Counselor Hoy, any additions or deletions?
No.
A consent, oh, I don't have any public comments signed up. Consent calendar?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Second by Anderson?
Thank you. So that includes item 3.1A, the January 11th, 2021 draft Urban Renewal Agency minutes. Item 3.2A, authorizing the short-term borrowing from the Gillicrist Urban Renewal Area. Item 3.2B, authorizing the short-term borrowing for the Mill Creek Industrial Park Urban Renewal Area. Item 3.2C, authorizing the short-term borrowing for the North Gateway Urban Renewal Area. Item 3.2D, authorizing the short-term borrowing for the Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Area. Item 3.2E, authorizing the short-term borrowing for the South Waterfront Urban Renewal Area. Item 3.2F, authorizing the short-term borrowing for the West Salem Urban Renewal Area. Item 3.3A, fiscal year 2019, 2020 Urban Renewal Agency Financial Report, and that concludes the consent calendar.
Very good. Counselor Anderson, did you have any questions on this?
Yeah, I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just thought maybe Director Rutherford or Mr. Barron could just let the new counselors know, what is the deal with short-term borrowing?
Good evening. Kristin Rutherford, Urban Development Director, and I'm happy to speak to the first part of it, and then if there are any questions about the rates or the process that we went through, then I will turn it over to Mr. Barron. The urban renewal spending cycle is set up by state statute by ORAS 457 so that we cannot spend tax increment directly. Statute requires that we have a debt instrument in order to be able to spend it. And as we go through the normal city budget process, and we recognize our, all other city revenues through the budget process in, you know, in the, the spring-June timeline. With urban renewal, our tax increment doesn't come into the agency until about now. So you have to have all of those tax bills that get sent out in the fall, the payments occur, and then this time of year, that money flows into the Urban Renewal Agency. But because of the way the statute's written, we can't spend that directly. We'll have to have a debt instrument, and the debt instrument could be long-term debt or bonded debt. It could be du jour borrowings, which is what we're doing now, which we go through this process every year at this time. It could be overnight loans from the city's general fund, which is a mechanism that the city's used in the past. And for large-scale projects, it could also be a construction contract. So we, we tend to do a combination of the bonds or long-term debt and then the du jour bonds. So we have been working and living off of cash flow from last year's du jour bonds through to now, and now this will give us the ability to use this year's tax increment to move forward with additional projects.
Okay, that's clear. Anyone have any questions? Further questions? Thank you, Kristin. Really appreciate you.
Welcome.
At the light. Hey, let's, let's go ahead and vote on this then. Recorder, please call the roll.
Board Member Stapleton?
Aye.
Board Member Anderson?
Aye.
Board Member Phillips?
Aye.
Board Member Leung?
Aye.
Board Member Gonzalez?
Aye.
Board Member Hoy?
Aye.
Board Member Nordike?
Aye.
Board Member Lewis is absent. Chair Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. I don't see any other business for the Urban Renewal Agency. So I'm going to adjourn it and call to order the meeting of the Salem City Council for January 25th, and recorder please call.
Counselor Stapleton?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Likewise.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Leung?
Here.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Present.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Mayor Bennett?
Here. Okay. Just one second here. I'm just going to look at this for a minute. Any additions, deletions, or revisions, Counselor Hoy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda, including item 1.4A, a presentation related to item 3.3T, but 3.3D by the Confederated Tribes of the Select Indians. Item 3.3E, priority bills for the 2021 legislative session.
Very good. Question?
I believe we need a second, Mayor.
I was looking at Anderson. I thought I heard him say second, so I'm gonna.
In the fine tradition of former Counselor Bednar, I second.
Thank you. If you'd please call the roll.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung? Excuse me?
Aye.
Thank you. Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, we'll move then to Councilor Management comments. Anyone have anything they want to comment on? Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening. Welcome again to all my new peers on City Council. I'm so excited to work with all of you, and welcome back to all my pre-existing peers. It's great to be here with you all. Just a few quick updates on a couple of the initiatives that our city has been working hard on. One, tiny homes. I recently toured a tiny home option with Gretchen Bennett at a local business here in Salem known as Watershed Rainware. And this is just one of the options that we are looking at as we examine and explore ways to address homelessness in our city. So I really want to stress that this is still an option, and I look forward to working with our entire council to find solutions towards supporting a housing-first model to help our unsheltered residents around us. Related to that, I also recently went down to the Duration Shelter that Arches is running out on Portland Road. The City of Salem earlier approved funds to help make this partnership with Arches at the Portland Road facility a reality. And I toured that with Robert Marshall of Arches, and that is another phenomenal way to help get folks in, out of the cold during our most miserable time of year. Next, and not least, on our homelessness agenda, I encourage folks, if you have not already signed up, and if you have the ability to do so, please sign up to volunteer for our annual point-in-time count. Every year, we do an annual count of all persons experiencing homelessness across the city. This count is extremely important because the more data we have, the more informed our decision-making process can be as a city and as a community. And just one other tiny detail, federal funds are also tied to an accurate count of our local population persons experiencing homelessness. I have signed up to serve lunch during the point-in-time count on Tuesday. And you can go to Arches' website online to sign up for a shift. When I spoke to Robert Marshall at Arches a couple of weeks ago, he assured me that if you've never volunteered in homelessness-related services, this is actually a great sort of beginner's starter course, if you will, for helping people out. They train all the new volunteers, and you go out with a group of volunteers to meet with and to count persons who are currently without a home. So I strongly recommend, again, if you have the time and the wherewithal to contribute to this point-in-time count, please help us out. Last but not least, I continue to work with a variety of community partners in the area on the Sanium Canyon recovery efforts. Although the wildfires have faded from the headlines, the damage that is done is absolutely devastating, and I expect would take at least a generation to recover from. I was happy to be a part of the presentation where United Way and International Housing Concepts and Tiny Mountain Houses banded together to donate a tiny home to a family that has been rendered homeless by the wildfires. Unfortunately, there may be several hundred people from the canyon who may be homeless as a result of this. It's hard to know because the data is ever-evolving. There may in fact be many more than that, but I will continue to work with our community partners, and if you're interested, I would recommend checking out Sanium Canyon Wildfire Relief Fund on Facebook or just go online. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. So I just want to take the time to first, I've been meaning to say this for a few weeks, to thank all of the city staff and directors for training up the new city counselors. They put in several months of 12 or more meetings with us to catch us up to speed so we could hit the ground walking. And it made a big difference, and I really appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. I doubt I'm alone. Those are high-yield, high-level training sessions, so thank you. Beyond that, I just want to give kind of a healthcare update regarding where we're at in terms of the pandemic. You know, it's still very real, but we're seeing some progress. For the first time, you know, our daily average has dipped down below 600 cases reported in 24-hour cycle. That's back kind of about where we were at the end of October, beginning of November. So it's still way higher than our summer average, but it comes off of the peak of over 1,000 new cases per day. So all of our actions that we're taking together are making a difference. So wearing masks, avoiding those group gatherings. You know, those things are making a difference, and we're seeing, you know, more progress in terms of people getting the vaccine. But even if you're in a 1A group and you've gotten your vaccine like I did two weeks ago, you can't let up. You've still got to be vigilant. Now makes as much difference as any point in this, especially because we've seen our second and third case of the variant out of the United Kingdoms. It's likely to be about 50 or more percent more transmissible, possibly a little bit more dangerous. So there are many reasons to be cautious and vigilant, you know, keep wearing your mask, avoid group gatherings, you know, do the social distancing. It's gonna pay off. It gets us closer to reopening schools, reopening our businesses, and just being a safe and, and strong community. So thank you for taking this seriously. Especially thank you as a frontline healthcare provider. It helps. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. We appreciate your counsel on this. Tom, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, yes, I did. Thanks. One of the items that is on the consent calendar is 3.3E, which is a result of recommendations made by the Legislative Subcommittee, of which the mayor and I and Ms. Counselor Hoy and Counselor Lewis are on. And there are two bills that seem to create a lot of, one bill really that creates a lot of discussion from the public, and that relates to a House Bill 2488, and that bill was one where we said, as the Legislative Subcommittee, we would just watch this bill. And that bill relates to land use planning and climate change and looking at things through an equity lens, and that fits right in with the things that we are doing as a council. We just haven't had time to do anything other than watch, and I want the public to be assured that at our next meeting, we will be thoroughly looking at this, and we will be making a recommendation for the next council meeting to one way or the other, and I'm pretty sure it's going to be, we're going to support, but we just didn't have time to look at it. So that will be in plenty of time to inform the legislature of our desires in this area. There's another one that didn't make the list, which is House Bill 2388, which the mayor and I are somewhat familiar with, having worked a little bit with the committee proposing it. It's a building code measure, and what it will do is require building codes to be written, so the, both the building and, building of, of the building of buildings and the operation of buildings will be as energy efficient and as sustainable as possible. That bill will also come before the committee next, next meeting that we have, and we'll be making a recommendation on that to the council as a whole at the next council meeting. And again, as with the equity lens on land use planning and climate change, I anticipate a favorable recommendation, but we're just not there yet. So I hope the public hears this and indulges this, and we'll come back to it two, two weeks from now at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge that we, I really made it through, I think, this really intense time. And it feels really good now, a week in. I know I am feeling much more relaxed and ready to do a lot of work and in our communities. And I just wanted to really reach out to everybody watching and encourage people to stay engaged in the process. You know, over this last year or so, four years, we've had really high engagement from the public in our policy and in our legislative processes. And I just want to encourage that to continue. It doesn't, the work doesn't stop now, and and, you know, go to those neighborhood association meetings and participate and, you know, join the board and help where you can. Because those people have been there for a long time, and they are, they're working really hard, and I'm sure they would really appreciate the support from people coming in and with fresh energy to do that work. So paying attention to these meetings, your school board meetings, your, your commissioner, county commissioner meetings, and just really staying present and offering your voice when it's, when you feel like it's needed by providing public comment. It's always so helpful for us to hear from you. So I wanted to encourage that. And speaking of neighborhood associations, I wanted to send a shout out to all of my neighborhood associations. I think I have six of them. And two of them, Grant and Nan, are my stomping grounds. So I'm real familiar, familiar with those people. I'm getting to know Cessna, which is literally, I think, extended family now, even after one meeting. They're just a really amazing group of people. And still getting to know Highland and Can Do, but I wanted to send a special shout out to West Salem. Jim Lewis and I went this last Monday, and it was just so pleasant and welcoming and just really a well-run meeting, and they opened up with inclusion statement, and I just felt it was just really positive and really good participation there and great conversations, and I just wanted to thank them for all their hard work that they've been doing over there. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very good news. Yes, Counselor Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have three items. So on January 9th, in our police department was conducting a search warrant, actually a few blocks from my house. And at some point, the neighbor's dog got through the fence, approached the officers, and was shot dead. You know, I, I can't go into the details because now this is, there might be legal action. But I'm bringing this up to let this family know that I'm thinking of them, and that my family's praying for them. My kids will be traumatized if this were to happen to our dogs, who would have done exactly the same thing that that puppy did. You know, I reached out to Chief Womack and suggested we maybe review out to Chief Womack and suggested we maybe review the rules of engagement when it comes to pets. I think over the last five to 10 years, our society, the attitude has changed. You know, you don't see as many chained dogs. The penalties for dog abuse are higher. And you know, what you can't do is change the mind of a kid who considers that pet real family. During my campaign walks, I was actually bit by a dog, so I understand that some of these are real, some of these actions, this really happens. But also know that we don't arm our male carriers. They're not. You know, building a relationship between my neighborhoods and the police department is a high priority for me. You know, so it was actually really nice when Chief Womack, as soon as he was sworn in, he reached out to me. And we're actually working on setting up a few times for him to, him and I to visit several community members I know and a lot of the small businesses. And actually, somewhere where it just made a difference is, you know, there were some shots fired yesterday morning, and Chief Womack reached out to me personally. And then I was in turn able to reach out to some people that I know that live real near that, just to let them know that we're gonna be there for them, we'll keep them updated, and they can reach out to me, us, if they needed any help. And, you know, they were really grateful. You know, they were surprised how quickly we jumped on it because they hadn't yet heard about it. And, you know, so that's, that was to me, my opinion's, a real good moment of building trust. So that was number one. Number two, you know, after reports of the sewage being sent to the Willamette River, I reached out to Mr. Powers, and we had a good talk, and I learned a lot about the system. And he's actually gonna invite us, you know, especially the newer councilors that maybe have had a chance to visit that facility. The result could have been worse, I guess, not, you know, now after learning how this thing works. But what I wanted to share with him is sort of, I think, my long-term vision, and I think we'd all like to see what the development that's happened on the east side of the river, Gilbert House, the carousel, the park, the bridge, the new amphitheater. It'd be nice to see that on the west side, you know, because I think that's something our community needs. My family, for example, depended, used to depend on those splash pads. No cost. No, my kids would have had miserable summer days in an air-conditioned home. But those little splash pads made the difference for me, especially when we didn't have enough money to go spend elsewhere. And I know a lot of families are really depend on those during the summer. And just the last thing I wanted to mention is, every, at least once a month for my whole term, I'm gonna pick a day to clean up, clean up that community, just clean up our neighborhoods. The first one's actually on February 13. You can get details about it through my personal Facebook page. I'm gonna decide what neighborhood, what streets we're gonna do just a few days before. Rain or shine, I'll be there. My family will be there. So I invite anybody, anybody that wants to come to join. The only thing I'm gonna ask is no selfies. This has to be for the community only. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Leung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I had a death in my family, so I'm not gonna stay on for too long. I will stay on long enough to vote on the resolutions that were proposed two weeks ago by Counselor Anderson and I. And I'll speak more about my proposal about why racism is a public health crisis and what we as a city must do when we get to that topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then. We will move on to...
Mayor, the city manager had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Manager?
Thank you, Council President. If it's all right with council, I'd like a couple staff people to give a brief update on some issues that have been timely. First, Chief Womack on the city's preparations leading up to and on inauguration day. Then Peter Fernandez on the two-waying of State Street and in close with Gretchen Bennett regarding the temporary shelter that's being started at the fairgrounds, if that would be all right.
That's great. Thank you.
Please, Chief, keep it brief. If there are questions, we can certainly follow up with councilors individually after the meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Counselors, good evening. Trevor Womack, Chief of Police. You know, I'm happy to provide an update this week on protests, which is very short. We didn't have any significant protests, and I know we were all across the nation, obviously, on high alert and concerned about what may happen leading up to and through inauguration day. And so thankfully, nothing too significant resulted here in Salem. But I did want to touch on the amount of planning and preparation that went into to being ready and the communication that we maintained with our community. A lot of close coordination and collaboration with our law enforcement partners as well. And so from Sunday each day all the way through Thursday, we were fully staffed up and ready. We had a full incident command post active and prepared for whatever might come our way. So with that, I also just want to say how proud I am of my staff. Again, acknowledge the amount of hours they've been dedicating towards these protests. They've been pulling them away from many occasions from their regular duties, and so I'm just, I'm just proud of the work they put in, and I want to thank them publicly for that. And just say, the last time we met, and I gave a presentation on our, on our priorities, is how we manage protests. We continue to follow through with that, just focused on making sure there's no violence and property damage, and taking enforcement action on minor offenses when it's reasonable and appropriate. And finally, that last piece that I've been talking about are the quality follow-up investigations, because the work doesn't end for us at the end of the protest. It continues on. And so while there was no significant protest last week, we did make a couple of arrests that were in the media, and I'll mention them now as well. We arrested a man for vandalizing a window to one of our local businesses downtown, as some of you are familiar with. We also followed up and arrested a man who was involved in the riotous behavior at our Capitol here back on December 21, when folks broke into the Capitol and attempted to assault some of our officers as well. So a couple of key arrests there were made last week, even though there was no protest. And we're gonna continue to do that, continue to follow up and hold folks accountable for crimes that perhaps we weren't able to address during an actual protest. So that's my brief update tonight on protests. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. I just wanted to, to report, we're delighted to report that we've opened the two-way of State Street.
Hey!
I know this will make the mayor very happy. So this portion is from Liberty to Church Street. We opened it overnight, one of the nights last week. Parking is all restriped, and I think people have learned to use it very quickly. This was funded with $362,000 in downtown URA funds. I'd like to remind the councilors that we're here for it and educate the new councilors a little bit. That project was part of the Central Salem Mobility Study that had a series of projects that were recommended and were slowly funding those projects. Projects that are already completed along with the two-waying of State Street is the High and Church Street buffered bike lanes and the Union Commercial Street signal that provides for pedestrian and bike access across Commercial Street onto, onto the Union Street Bridge and Riverfront Park. We have also removed a bunch of dual-turn lanes downtown that we had promised to do that were not safe for pedestrians. Our future projects include the Union Street Family Friendly Bike Lane that's coming up in 2023. And Director Rethiford told me that there's money in the URA fund to do the two-waying of Court Street, to put it in the budget next year. So that will also be to Church Street. Now, Church Street is kind of a magic demarcator because that's where the URA boundary is. So to get that two-waying from Church all the way to 12 for those two streets, we'll need to find a bond issue or some other funding, because then it's outside the URA. But at least the downtown portions will be done. So I just wanted to report on that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Gretchen?
Yes, greetings, everybody. Hi, Gretchen Bennett, Mayor and City Manager's Office, reporting in on the Fairgrounds Sheltering Project, coming from the November 9 decision at City Council to allocate funds related to sheltering in particular. This is a partnership with the Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency and one of their key funders, the Oregon Housing and Community Services, and the Church of the Park, to operate managed temporary limited sheltering at the fairgrounds. The idea would be to manage in the interior southern end of the fairgrounds, specifically inside the pavilion building, and then use eight parking spaces at the, at each of their two parking lots, despite the large size of the parking lot, to be very tucked into the interior of the fairgrounds there. And that it would include two security staff and a minimum of five additional staff at all times. The concept involves operating 24/7, so people don't have to leave during the day, like some shelters are only a partial duration, but this is a 24/7. And much has been brought in, case management onsite, food, showers, services, as well as twice daily, there's a van available to take people to off-site services if necessary. So the idea is to hope to really stabilize and minimize any kind of need for traffic and coming and going. It's temporary. We're certainly respecting the role of the fairgrounds and being able to attract and operate events. And so we'd be prepared to leave. This is seen as a very temporary usage of the facility, given the current limitations on the fairgrounds to operate any kind of events. And it's certainly capping the number of people. We're imagining 100 people would be able to be in, indoors in the pavilion, and then the limited number of parking spaces in the, in the parking space as well. So, yes, go ahead.
Also, make sure to thank and recognize the cooperation and the assistance from Kim Gru Powell, the Fair Director, and the Fair Council chaired by Commissioner Kevin Cameron. They've been really strong supporters, and we could not be providing this needed additional shelter capacity without their cooperation and assistance.
Thank you. Yes.
Great. Great job, Gretchen. I know how long and hard you've been working on this. So really fantastic to see this. I think it's one of the common questions is, why aren't we using the fairgrounds? At least we'll have an opportunity to show how this can be done.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a follow-up question?
You bet.
Thanks. Ms. Bennett, you mentioned the parking spaces. Are those for car camping that we've allocated throughout the city, or are they for spaces that would serve the people who will be inside?
Car camping. The idea is to utilize eight spaces in each. Now, these lots are huge. We're trying to minimize the impact and balance the need in the community with minimizing impact at the space.
Thank you.
Of course.
Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Bennett, because, you know, Counselor Gonzalez and I, and I don't know if any others, have been receiving some emails with some concerns from our, from our neighbors around the fairgrounds. And Ms. Bennett, it's just been so fantastic to respond really quickly to the concerns of the neighbors and has offered to come to a meeting that we're gonna be having hopefully on Wednesday night. So just thank you for being so available, for really just having so much information and helping to calm fears and any questions that people might have. So I appreciate your extra work.
My pleasure. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to talk with people.
Very good. Okay, we'll, we'll move on then, unless there's anyone else. Okay? Just one second here. We're gonna go to presentations. I'm gonna begin with our memorandum of understanding with the Confederated Tribes of the Sallets. We have with us Dolores Pixley, who is the Chair of the Tribal Council, and want to kind of go over what this is and give Dolores an opportunity to comment as well. Last week, I had the pleasure of signing this memorandum of understanding with Dolores Pixley, Tribal Chair of the Confederated Tribes of the Sallets Indians of Oregon. This MOU is significant as it strengthens the relationship between the city and the tribe to facilitate communication on matters of mutual interest. The Sallets Tribe is a federally recognized Indian tribe from descendants of more than 30 tribes, whose ancestral homeland included present-day Northern California to Southern Washington, from the summit of the Cascade Range to the Pacific Ocean. The Sallets Tribe is significant to our city because they are a successor to several ratified and unratified treaties, including the Willamette Valley Treaty, in which the area comprising the present-day city was ceded. The city of Salem recognizes the Sallets Tribe and their historical and active connection to our region. This MOU formalizes our commitment to continued education and outreach projects to share the Sallets Tribe's past, to maintain regularly scheduled meetings with tribal representations, and to ensure consultation on all city projects on the sites of tribal significance. Last year, the city signed a similar MOU with the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde. These formalities and shared signature lines are a symbol of our ongoing friendship and recognition of the valley's first narrative, first of the valley's first nation and their heritage to our community. So thank you. And Dolores, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I do. I want to thank you for including me in the meeting this evening. I've heard lots of good comments on lots of things that you're doing that are very interesting to me and for our tribe. And I do live here in the valley. I live in Kaiser, so I'm very much up to speed on things that happen around town. But I look forward to a great relationship while working on issues that are important to both the tribe and the city. This area is historic for our tribe, and we own land here in Salem. We have land in Fee and land in Trust. We have several businesses, and we have an office that provides services to tribal members here in Salem. We have many mutual interests, and I'm looking forward to when I can sit across the table from you and meet you all in person. It's really nice to be able to see you and hear you discuss items of interest. It'll be nicer when we're able to see each other and say hello. And, and I, hopeful this year is gonna be a better year. It has to be.
Your lips to God's ears, Dolores.
I'm looking forward to not wearing a mask one of these days, and just to be able to come up to the city and say hello and participate. And I appreciate the comments I've heard about volunteerism in the city. I think it's great.
Right.
I thank you all.
Did anyone want to say anything to Dolores? You don't get to talk to her real often, and she's just a tremendous person. Dolores, we're looking forward to that, to both the spirit and the reality over the years of working on this MOU. I think we're gonna have some tremendous opportunities together. And I know what a pleasure it has been for me over my years on the council, as well as mayor, to have gotten to know you and to work with you. So again, thank you. Thank you for your patience on getting this all put together.
Thank you, and I look forward to sharing information and to inviting all of you over to the coast when we have some of our, if we have our celebrations this year.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. And we, you'll be given an opportunity to ratify this here in a few minutes under another item of business. And I'm gonna move, move on then to public comment. Public has an opportunity to speak for three minutes to the city council on, in this case, on topics they've signed up for that are on your agenda tonight. And all I would ask is kind of keep your eyes peeled for the one minute, and at three minutes, I'll ask you to stop speaking. So Chris Young?
My name is Chris. Word to, I want to comment on the shameful behavior displayed by Mayor Bennett and Counselor Lewis during the council meeting on January 11 in regards to the anti-white supremacy resolutions. Mayor Bennett, you're smirks and laughs while members of the community and councilors share their experiences of being subjected to racism, and physical danger is deplorable and makes Salem less safe. Videos of domestic terrorism and racism occurring in Salem often go viral, and domestic terrorists and white supremacists around the nation are watching Salem with a close eye. When they see you selectively enforcing the three-minute comment rule, selectively asking councilors if they have follow-up questions for the commenter, smirking, laughing, not paying attention, and even walking away from the meeting when white supremacy is being discussed and personal experiences by BIPOC community members and councilors are being shared, it makes it clear to violent white supremacists and members of hate groups that you, as mayor, do not take this issue seriously. Whether you believe that to be true or not is irrelevant, because the message is received all the same by dangerous people that continue to flood into our city. They feel welcomed in Salem, and you have directly contributed to that with your dog whistles about potential property damage and an unwillingness to listen to your community and take meaningful action to address the danger that you and City Manager Steve Powers have contributed to. Your actions and lack of action make it abundantly clear that your vote to condemn white supremacy is symbolic at best, and that is shameful. Counselor Lewis, wherever you are, at the December 14 council- Counselor Lewis, wherever you are, at the December 14th council meeting, you tried to equate ongoing Proud Boys violence in Salem to kids listening to music, which makes Salem less safe. When you make that ridiculous false equivalency, it tells the community and anyone watching Salem from afar that you don't care about the plague of violence and menacing that our residents have faced for months on end. I expected you, Counselor Lewis, to change your tune, or at least remain silent out of regret during the January 11th council meeting, given the domestic terrorist activity at our Capitol on December 21st and the Proud Boys riots in Salem on January 1st and 6th. But not only did you essentially double down on your shameful rhetoric, you went further by dog whistling about what is going on in Portland, which is a favorite talking point of the white supremacists that are terrorizing Salem. You tried to make the false equivalency between white supremacy and Antifa. Counselor Lewis, did you not learn anything during the diversity training that the council recently participated in? We do not have an Antifa problem in Salem. We have a white supremacy problem and domestic terrorist problem. When you try to water down the domestic terrorism and racism that our community is being subjected to, it directly contributes to the growing danger that our city is engulfed in. I want to urge the council to stop claiming that Salem is a hotbed for protest violence because we are the capital. We are where we are because of months of selective enforcement and preferential treatment towards white supremacists and domestic terrorists. Trying to sugarcoat that contributes to the danger that Salem is engulfed in. Salem is not safe, and until all of our cities...
Thank you, Mr. Young. I'm afraid your three minutes are up. I'm going to have to stop you. Thanks. Lori Doherty?
Okay, there I am. Okay, all right. Mayor Bennett and counselors, I am going to address a different issue on the agenda. I'm speaking on behalf of 350 Salem, Oregon. I'd like to speak to Agenda Item 3.3E concerning priority bills for the 2021 Oregon Legislative Session, particularly on HBH 2488, addressing climate justice through land use planning. I appreciate Counselor Anderson's remarks saying that this is still under consideration as something that the Salem City Council will possibly support, and I urge you to support it. We are facing serious issues with climate change, and the city is working on it. We have a climate action plan in progress. We are incorporating climate issues into our Salem planning process. We've become aware of how much land use and climate are related. And within both of those processes, the idea of climate justice equity is becoming more and more prominent. People are speaking to it and urging that it be considered within these, you know, proceedings. I keep saying that we are now in a position, a very unique position, where we have global to local alignment around climate. We have, we're in the Paris Agreement. We have very strong domestic policy going on. The state is working on climate change, and the city is working on climate change. So I believe that support for this land use planning process at the state is very much in concert with Salem's proceedings that are going on now. So I hope that it will be supported by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Questions? All right. Very good. Hey, the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar with the following exceptions: virtually everything. 3.2A pulled by Counselor Anderson, 3.2B pulled by Counselor Anderson, 3.3A pulled by Counselor Hoy, 3.3B pulled by Counselor Anderson, 3.3C pulled by Counselor Hoy. And that just leaves the three items on the consent agenda.
And so, okay, second by? Okay, very good. Okay, you want to go over what is still on the consent calendar?
Yes, and I'll appreciate it if the city recorder will double-check my work because a lot of last-minute changes here. And I hope my notes are accurate. So that leaves us with Item 3.1A, the January 11th, 2021 draft city council minutes. Item 3.1B, the January 19th, 2021 draft city council work session minutes. Item 3.3D, the memorandum of understanding between the Confederated Tribes of the Salets Indians of Oregon and the city of Salem. And 3.3E, priority bills for the 2021 Oregon Legislative Session. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Counselor Nordike?
Yes, actually, I did want to pull the legislative session, 3.3E, for discussion.
It's not a second yet. It's okay to pull. I just got to find it and mark it, is all I'm trying to do. Sorry.
No problem.
Now, let's try to do these the night before if we can. If it's at all convenient, it does help us a little. Okay. Got it. Okay, well, that leaves us with one item, I believe, to vote on. So I'll call on the recorder. Please call, roll.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. We have no public hearings. Dan, are you there?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Would you remind me what order then these go? Do we start with 5A and then go back to 32A? Is that how that?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct. So we'll start with 5A and then go to the polls.
Okay, we'll start with Special or Business 5A. This is Travel Salem Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Budget Report Annual. Angie, you're up.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
On screen? Okay. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Angie Anyuuchi, and I'm the President and CEO of Travel Salem. It's my pleasure to be here with you this evening to present some highlights from our 1920 annual report. I'd like to briefly thank Counselor Lewis, Courtney Bush, and Chris Snyder for their service on the Travel Salem Board. Okay, let's jump right in. We have three key performance measurements. The first is estimated economic impact. Past fiscal year, the tourism sector generated $638 million in economic impact for the region. That economic impact is comprised of both day and overnight visitation. We saw more than 2 million visitors to Marion County alone last year, spending $143 per day and staying an average of 2.7 nights. This is the only key performance metric of the three that saw an increase despite the pandemic. Please bear in mind that most of the statistics I will present to you today are down due to COVID. The second key performance measurement is transient occupancy tax, or TOT. TOT was down 13% due to COVID. It's impacted by the volume of rooms sold and the rates charged. It's the combination of these factors that drive the fund. I would like to mention that our market outperformed other Oregon destinations even during the pandemic. We have sold more rooms, and our rates have stayed relatively healthy. This is in large part due to the mix of business we get in Salem with a balance of leisure, corporate, and real business. The third and final key performance measurement is leverage, which tracks the donated products and services we secure to support our cash investments. Leverage was primarily driven by our media in partnership with the Willamette Valley Visitors Association. We covered a plan in response to COVID-19 and successfully worked to ensure our destination didn't go dark during the crisis. We pivoted our messaging to an inspirational focus through campaigns such as "Miss You Already." We did outreach to residents through the 18 neighborhood associations and promoted local itineraries to help them safely explore their own backyards. We did resident surveys to gauge readiness for welcoming back visitors, and we created a virtual visitor center that we promoted out to 7,000 prior consumer inquiries. We rolled out a Salem Strong ad that you probably have seen on the Huggins Building. We created 360-degree video experiences and launched new COVID-specific e-communications. We also produced the Salem Anthem video, which I sent to you prior to this meeting. We continue to leverage the Anthem video to promote the destination and build community with our residents. The visitor information network connected with more than 220,000 visitors in the fiscal year. The work we do through the visitor center is designed to lengthen the stay of visitors who may be just passing through our destination to somewhere else like the coast or bend. It's our job to try and convert them to stay either for the day or overnight. Our public relations efforts generated more than $1.2 million in media exposure and reached more than 55 million consumers. Our social media efforts continue to drive brand awareness and engagement with target audiences. We focused primarily on Facebook and Instagram and had year-over-year increases for both channels. Facebook is a pay-to-play channel, and despite having to cut our advertising dollars used to boost Facebook, we still secured a modest increase in exposure. We produced 21 videos in-house. We published 18 blogs and utilized a robust e-communication strategy to reach consumers. We worked throughout the year to keep our website, travelsalem.com, in peak performance as it's the primary marketing tool for the destination, and it remained a critical resource for visitors and residents wanting to know what was open and available in our region during COVID and the wildfires. On the destination development side, we partnered with Travel Oregon to develop the new Great Oaks Food Trail, which includes 44 businesses focused on locally sourced products. Last fiscal year, we secured $6.6 million in group business, which was down 72%. Unfortunately, a large majority of group business is held in the months between March and June, which was when the market closed due to COVID. However, last year, we also generated $21 million in future bookings. Our efforts to keep the pipeline full for future years continues to be a primary focus of travel. The sports and events program has continued to be to-go gangbusters despite COVID, as we have looked to create new events, such as the West Coast Premier Pickleball Tournament, which will occur later this spring. We developed a five-year sports strategic plan committed to establishing Salem as the sports capital of Oregon. We are well on our way to do just that. We are working on a regional cornhole tournament, a regional volleyball tournament, and we're currently in contract negotiations with them. Looking forward to this fiscal year, things are picking up momentum as consumer confidence begins to return with the rollout of the vaccine. We are staying future-focused on keeping the destination top of mind with consumers and ensuring that we're ready to host visitors when it's safe to do so. I will be traveling this week to St. George, Utah, to meet with decision-makers at SkyWest to hopefully convince them to bring commercial air service to our market. I want to thank you again for your support and commitment to healthy tourism promotion efforts here in Salem, and I'd be happy to answer any questions should you have any. Thank you again for your time this evening.
Excellent report, Angie. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Yes, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a question so much as a comment. Angie, I just wanted to thank you for your fantastic work during this extraordinary year. I know it's been a major challenge like no other, and I just thank you for your continuing to promote Salem and for your positive outlook on the situation, knowing that we'll get through this one way or the other. But I just wanted to thank you personally for your great work.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Counsel Anderson?
Thank you. I think I probably speak for everybody, Angie. I agree with Counselor Hoy. I agree with everybody else. You have been given a horrible, horrible situation to deal with, as have we all, but it really affects you, and I commend you on the way you have faced this crisis in a straightforward, direct matter, and for the good work you're doing to come back after the whole country comes back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Gonzalez?
Really, it's going to echo the same thing. Anybody that's met with Angie and her staff, if you haven't, you'll be impressed. And, you know, Angie knows that we were about to do a fun activity and increase tourism in northeast Salem with all these rich, the rich culture we have up here. But right as COVID hit, so we're looking forward to that, getting back to that.
We look forward to it as well. Thank you.
I think we all look forward to that, Jose. Thank you. Anyone else? Well, again, thank you on behalf of the council and the city. Just great job you guys are doing in what has been one of certainly the toughest years any of us have ever seen for, particularly for your industry. It's really been marvelous. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, we'll move on then to the rest of this action. That starts with you, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2021-2, condemning racism and white supremacy.
Second? Second by Hoy.
There's not much for me to say because we really discussed this last meeting pretty thoroughly. It's important that the city take this stand. And I also want to say with respect to this and with respect to 3.2B, which is a companion measure introduced by Counselor Leung, that these words are great, but we got to do something. And I particularly appreciate Counselor Leung's motion because it gives some things that the city's going to do. And so we need to continue this, and I would ask for periodic reports from the staff as to what we have been doing. I have a number of ideas that we don't need to talk about now, but I'd be happy to discuss this with Gretchen or anyone else who is going to be the staff lead for this. These are important things. We need to do it.
Very good. Yes, Counsel Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to sort of underscore what Counselor Anderson just said, and I want to speak directly to the city manager on this. And just, it's really important to me for this item and also 3.2B, that this not just be happy talk on a piece of paper, but it actually translates into impacting how we operate this city. And that's going to fall directly on his shoulders, and I look forward to his plan. I know he'll embrace this wholeheartedly. I'm not trying to suggest anything other than that. But I look forward to working with him to make this happen and for reports periodically on where we're at and what the plan is. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I agree with the comments that Counselors Hoy and Anderson said, so I'll be brief. Yes, words alone are not enough, and we need to take affirmative steps towards increasing equity in our city. There are little ways in which we are already doing that, and I commend the work that we have done so far to that end. For example, when we talked about submitting grants and presenting grants to small business communities, we wanted to make sure that our communities of color knew about those grant opportunities because during the pandemic, everyone has been impacted. But there are some communities, according to the data, that have been impacted more than others. So little things like that really add up, and they're not little to the persons who benefit from it. So I heartily agree with that. And I have had some people ask me, why do these things even need to be said? Well, unfortunately, I've talked to too many members of our community who feel that unless we acknowledge it, that can be perceived as pretending that it doesn't exist. Unfortunately, we've seen ample evidence of these things in our city just within the last year. And so unfortunately, it must be said because if we don't condemn racism and white supremacy, how on earth are we expected to address it? So words matter, and words are, like Counselor Anderson said, just the first step. And I look forward to seeing what we can do as a city to distribute that equity lens throughout, which is one of the reasons why I believe our council agreed to do diversity and equity training for the city staff as well as for ourselves, because it really does take a conscious effort. The status quo is all it takes. Doing nothing is all it takes for things to continue exactly as they are. And we don't want things to continue exactly as they are. So I see this as a small step in the right direction, and I look forward to more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson? Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Move on to 3.2B. Counsel Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the city council adopt Resolution 21-3, affirming racism as a public health crisis.
Second.
Second by Counsel Leung. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've already spoken on this in the earlier one, and we spoke about this. I've already spoken on this in the earlier one, and we spoke about this last week, and I want to thank Counselor Leong for bringing this forward. And also, Jackie, I'm sorry for the death in your family. And I appreciate the work that's been done on this. I appreciate the work that is going to be done on this because we've got some specific things laid out, and I am sure that the council comments that we made with the other resolution in terms of we need to do something, not just post this on our website and forget about it, equally apply to this. So thank you.
Counselor Leong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Anderson. 1,891. Does anyone know what that number refers to? Those are the COVID number of deaths in Oregon, and one of those deaths was my uncle, who was also a Klan chief, who died last week because of COVID. In addition to his death, there have been other deaths of other people my organization has provided support to when they were initially diagnosed with COVID. 1,891 Oregonians are dead, and the number is continuing to rise. I have been getting questions from community members about why I propose this resolution. Let me start off by asking everyone else this question. Why shouldn't racism be a concern? Why shouldn't health be prioritized? In Oregon and throughout the U.S., BIPOC, which again stands for Black Indigenous and People of Color, communities are dying at a faster rate from COVID because of racial health disparities. According to Dr. Georges Benjamin, Executive Director with the American Public Health Association, there's over three decades of multiple public health studies, and the conclusion has been health inequities is at its core is because of racism. These same health disparities not only affect low-income BIPOC communities, it cuts across class lines. Racism is killing our community. BIPOC are dying from both institutional and systematic racism, from police brutality to the lack of proper access to health services. This resolution is meant to start as a first, but it's not going to be the last way for the city of Salem to only hold our leaders, also Salem's staff and our community accountable, and we can't keep remaining silent. We keep on saying hate has no place in Salem. While Salem, hate is here, so what are we going to do about it? We denounce racism and white supremacy, and we're going to do everything in our ability to get rid of it in our community, in our city, and in our lives. Salem must live up to its meaning of its name. Peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Okay, could the recorder, oops, I'm sorry. Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to win my support, of course, for this and say it was beautifully written. Reading it in its entirety, I got choked up. It's powerful, but again, it needs all those actions. So it's a privilege to vote for this and to hear you speak, Counselor Leong, is an honor, and I value all the things that you're saying here, and they weigh on me, and it's serious for me. So thank you again for being vulnerable and bringing this forward. I look forward to voting for it and for taking action.
Thank you. Counselor Phillips, did I see your hand up?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselors Leong and Anderson, for bringing these two resolutions forward, especially this one. Jackie, I'm so sorry for the death in your family of COVID. I'm very sorry. That sucks. Thank you for being here tonight. I think it's important that the first thing that we've done as a body is to introduce these motions of this session. It's the very first thing that we did. It's important. It's timely. I can say as a healthcare provider, it's real. If you look at the data, it'll break your heart. And if you care for the patients experiencing these systemic and structural issues, it'll break your heart again. It's not just socioeconomic. There are real issues here, and just doing nothing is not good enough. Like getting back to normal is not good enough. You know, all it takes for evil to prevail is for good people not to do anything. So right now, we've got to do better than the old normal, and this is a step. These words are important, but I think every single person here tonight acknowledges that real action has to take place and will take place. So I emphatically support this. Thank you for bringing this forward. I'm happy to vote yes.
Very good. If the, is there anyone else? If the recorder could please call the roll.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leong.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Go to the next one, 3.3A. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the City Council authorize the city manager to execute the attached IGA 34027 with ODOT and any amendments to the IGA to allow the city of Salem to plow and sand the Sander Street and Marion Street bridges during winter storm events.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Nordike.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I will be recusing myself from participating in the votes on 3.3A, B, and C, and I'll be declaring an actual conflict of interest for all three. Again, in the abundance of caution, my intention is to not participate in the vote, although I don't expect to see any gains to me personally. These are interactions with state agencies. So accordingly, I will be taking no role in the votes on 3.3A, B, and C. And it would make sense to do, just to say that for all three right now and just take a break. I'm willing to defer to the city attorney on how best to go about doing that.
Dan, do you want to give advice?
Mr. Mayor, I can't get personal legal advice on ethics issues, so I am not going to advise Counselor Nordike, but she's going to refuse herself in the next three items, so she doesn't need to make that recusal again for the next two, so you can just go forward.
I think our comments were very clear. Thank you very much. Okay, any discussion on this? Counselor Hoy, do you want to talk about?
No, Mr. Mayor. I pulled it strictly as a courtesy to Counselor Nordike for purposes of conflict of interest, that there's no controversy here whatsoever, as far as I know.
Okay, great. The recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leong, I believe, has left the meeting. Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Counselor Anderson, 3.3B.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the City Council authorize the city manager to submit an application to the Oregon Community Pass Program to fund construction of the Pringle Creek Path connecting under Commercial Street southeast to Riverfront Park, and if successful, enter into an agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation to accept the funds.
I'll second that one, too.
I'm getting close to the city recorder who can read all these things in one breath. I think I did that.
Very well.
I only pulled this because of the reason I pull things all the time on this. I'm happy to see we're going to end up with a hanging bridge going under a Commercial Street, and under the bridge there is a way to get from the south side by the City Hall, Mirapon Park there, to the north side to get us to Riverfront Park, the Rotary, and then Amphitheater, and then eventually across the Ped Bike Bridge to Wallace Marine Park. This is a terrific thing. I'm so happy to see the hanging bridge here, and thanks, Public Works, and I think there's some community development work here, too, for moving this forward, and I look forward to riding my bicycle under the hanging bridge sometime. Thanks.
Thank you. I wanted to second that, too. This has been a project much like two-way centered, two-way state, doing our Bicycle Pass downtown, all the rest of it. It's been a really long-term package on our downtown transportation plan, and I just thought it was a good chance to be able to speak very briefly to it. And that is, in case you wonder, if your project isn't being taken seriously, understand each of these projects have been in the works for at least a decade, in many cases, longer. It just takes time to do them, time and money, and the thing that I want to underscore is the level of patience it takes. Counselor Anderson's familiar with this, I think Hoy, others who've been doing these kinds of projects. It just takes time and money, but what is really great is you've got a fantastic city staff to work with on these who know nothing, as far as I can tell, except help you work your way through the difficulties, and this is just the kind of project that I think illustrates these kinds of successes, and I'm just really pleased. We've got a couple of these up tonight where we're seeing some real, really, really tangible progress on some of these. And we have some on the ground already as well, over in the parks and down by Union Street, et cetera. So I'm glad Mr. Fernandez is here to hear what a great guy he is. We appreciate your work, Peter.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else? Recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Leong is absent. Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on then. We don't have any public hearings. Just sorry, I didn't buy that one. Oh, we got Hoy's motion. I'm sorry. 3.3C, right?
Correct. So I move the city ratify the city manager's execution of the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Business Development Department for personal protective equipment.
Second.
Hey, Stapleton seconds it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, there's no controversy with this. I pulled it as a courtesy of my role as council president on behalf of Counselor Nordike. She's already declared her conflict. I believe we can head straight to a vote.
Hey, we'll just do that. Recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leong is absent. Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So we'll move on then to information reports. Oops, I'm sorry.
We have one more, 3.3E pulled by Counselor Nordike.
Oh, I'm sorry, 3.3. Counselor Nordike. That's what, there it is.
Thank you all and appreciate your patience. So I just want to pull this to explain my vote in advance. As I understand it, they are--
Counselor, you need to start with the motion. I apologize.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Silly me. I'm still learning my way. So I move, well, let's see.
You want to do staff recommendation and kind of then talk about what you'd like to do? Would that work for you?
I'd prefer to have someone else make the motion because I'm actually--
I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay. There we go, Counselor Nordike.
Thank you so much for your patience. I sincerely appreciate that. So I understand that the staff recommendation is to approve the city of Salem's positions on various legislative bills, and I'm largely in favor of the things that I see in this document, but there are a couple of things that I will not support, which is why I won't be voting to support the staff recommendation. And there's a couple of other things I want to point out. I know that when we go to the legislature, we have a limited amount of funds and a limited amount of ability to really ask. So just a few comments, and then we'll move on with our agenda item. First, what I'm not in favor of, I do not support the staff recommendation in regards to management rights and collective bargaining, and I do not support the staff recommendation in regards to liability concerning the OTC. So that's the principal reason for me not supporting the legislative priorities. There are a number of things on here, though, that I'm intrigued by. For example, redevelopment of abandoned state-owned properties is one of the items identified in priorities, and that specifically mentioned supporting legislation that would encourage redevelopment of surplus state properties. I think that is a real opportunity, particularly here in Salem, where we have a lot of state-owned properties, and there are a lot of things already in the works, such as Yaquena Hall. I would encourage our mayor and our counselors to take a look at this new book by June Williamson and Ellen Dunham Jones called Case Studies in Retrofitting Suburbia: Urban Design Strategies for Urgent Challenges. And it's all about how we can redesign our cities as our cities continue to grow and evolve. We know that some aspects of the malls are going the way of the dinosaurs, and that there are ways to look at existing property, existing land, right smack dab in the middle of downtown or perhaps in some of our neighborhoods, where you can use retrofitting to address a variety of problems, whether it's public health, car dependency, supporting persons who are getting older, helping people compete for jobs, and so on and so forth. So I'm intrigued at the prospect of us taking a look at state-owned properties for a potential redevelopment, whether it's for more community centers, whether it's for more opportunities for our neighbors to connect, or whether it's for tackling homelessness. I see a lot of potential here, so I was glad to see that in the priorities. Two more points, and then I'll finish up. One, under the priority addressing homelessness, I did not see a mobile response unit specifically named as a priority under our homelessness section, and I would urge the legislative committee to make that a clear priority that is called out specifically. We've seen a huge amount of support from a variety of persons, the mental health advocates, the homeless advocates, members of our business community, and many other individuals. There is widespread support for this unit, and there's a reason why these units are being replicated around the country. And then, last but not least, one of the other documents in your materials includes a list of bills to watch, and I have a recommendation for a bill to watch, and that would be House Bill 2417. House Bill 2417 would require the Department of Human Services to administer a program to provide matching grants to cities or counties to operate mobile crisis intervention teams. So there may be actual money available that would help underwrite the cost of bringing a mobile response unit to cities just like this one. And so I would respectfully request that our legislative committee take a look at that bill and perhaps add that to the list of bills to watch. I have no idea what its fate is. It's a brand-new year, but I'm very intrigued to see that that bill is being sponsored by chief sponsors Sanchez, Marsh &amp; Solman, and then a half, let's see, several others, Representative Evans, Prusak, Reardon, Reynolds, Williams, Gelsner, and Wagner. So I'm intrigued by this bill, and I see it as having opportunity to really help deal with the mental health and the medical issues that people see in the field, and it would also, you know, potentially grow the pie. Rather than us having to slice that pie finer and finer, can we grow the pie by applying for grants that would take some financial pressure off of our institution and, again, continue to keep the money where we need it to be for high acuity calls as well that are handled by law enforcement, handled by fire departments? So anyway, I'm intrigued by that possibility. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would, I know that not everybody is on the legislative committee, so the processes can be a little bit mysterious for folks who aren't on it. So let me just explain a little bit about where we're at and how this session's going to move forward. We're currently meeting every other week because it's getting to the busy time. At some point, we'll change to weekly meetings like we do every session, but so far, we've only reviewed about 350 bills because that's all that were available prior to our last meeting. We anticipate, I think it's maybe up to 4,000 or 5,000 bills that will be dropped before the end of session, and so we're just barely into reviewing them. And so we'll be coming back for you, before you, and that's why we have sort of a broad framework. So as things come up, we can fit things within the broad framework that the council has approved, so we can advocate on the city's behalf. And also, as bills change, as they become amended, our position could change. So sometimes you'll see where we're just watching something because we're wanting to just hold back for whatever reason until we see how it sort of settles out and where things are going, and so sometimes we won't actually take a position until later. And so it looks like we're not really supportive when we probably are, but we're just not ready to put that down on paper. And sometimes there are bills that the staff has recommended opposing, or we've decided to oppose, and maybe at that time we do, but then things change, and we might change our position. And that's why, basically, this list is for us to help our lobbyists who we engage work on our behalf for our priorities. And so it's really a dynamic situation. I encourage everyone to watch the meeting notes, talk to members of the committee, and just kind of stay up because it really moves fast. And, but I appreciate the input. I've received input from a couple of-- I've received input from a couple of counselors this week, and I very much appreciate the perspective because there are bills sometimes that we just don't catch with just with the sheer volume. And so if there's a particular one that you know about that's coming or that has come out, it's helpful for us to know and have it flagged so we can be watching for it and really examine it and have staff take a look at it. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with everything Counselor Hoy said. I also think it would be helpful for folks to know that at every one of these meetings, and the mayor and I and Counselor Lewis and Counselor Hoy are on it, we've got an array of city staffers, each of whom is responsible for reporting to us on various bills in their various respective areas of expertise. So that's very important. With respect to the, I already made comments earlier in my council comments about House Bill 2398 and House Bill 2488, and we will be looking at those. And finally, with respect to Counselor Nordike, with the mobile response unit, she and I had talked about that before the meeting or communicated about it, and I was under the impression that we had included it in part of our ask, and somehow it just didn't make it in. But I will tell you, Counselor, that, and Mayor's nodding his head here, we all said, yes, we need to put an ask in for a mobile response unit. So if it's not, what didn't make it tonight, it'll be in front of the council at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's correct, Counselor Anderson. We did discuss it and did agree to make sure that got moved into the agenda. Counselor Stapleton, although the bill number is helpful to have a bill number, I'm not sure that's the bill number, but it sounds, I mean, the number I'm sure you're giving is correct, but how we get there will be a really interesting process. So we'll be talking with you more about this.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if the bill you're talking about my numbers or Counselor Nordike's numbers.
No, I'm sorry, talking Counselor Nordike's. I'm sorry.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I just want to reassure Counselor Nordike, we're not ignoring the mobile response unit funding mechanism. Who, kind of a broader discussion of this will occur. Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say this has been a really big education for me, just having this come up on the agenda and reading it. And I called Counselor Hoy and just saying, help me walk through this and voice my concerns. I know I had some concerns about House Bill 2487, and just talking those through, and he very much so listened to my concerns and, you know, said he would take it to the committee. So my education has been further informed by Counselor Nordike's great insight here on different things. So thank you to everybody for helping us newbies along, and I look forward to watching this process as it unfolds.
Great. Very good. Okay, we have a motion. Oh, Counselor Hoy, did you? Oh, okay. We have a, it's waving. I have motion on the floor. So if the recorder call a roll.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Nay.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung is absent. Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. And let me see what else we've got here. I think, oh, we have--
Information reports.
Information reports. Anybody need more information? Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would love to hear more about the update on Salem's climate action plan. I know I've been doing some emailing and talking with several people, but I would just love to hear more details than what was presented here. I know they're making some really good progress. I'd love to hear about that.
Okay. Patricia, is that correct? Patricia, you would be the person to fill us in? Great.
Yes, good evening. Hopefully you can hear me okay.
Yes.
Yeah, we're about a little less than halfway through the process. We have a 41-person task force, of which there are three city counselors on it. We are, have a four-pillar planning process with our consultant, and so we have done the visioning process. We have just completed a vulnerability assessment to look at the city's vulnerabilities for climate change, and we've opened up a strategy page on our website, so I would urge people to go to that page and add their ideas. We had a task force meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we had over 240 ideas generated to reduce greenhouse gas and to build a more resilient community. So we have a lot of good ideas, and we're looking for more ideas from the community as we move forward. And the last pillar after the strategy is implementation. How do we, how do we do these actions? What are the costs? What are the kind of the high-profile ones that we need to look at very carefully through an equity lens so that people are not disproportionately affected by some of these ideas or things that we move forward? So yeah, we're moving right along, and we're also coordinating with the R-Salem project and making sure that we look at the land use and transportation options to make sure that we're dovetailing with the comprehensive plan as well.
Good, thank you. Any other? Yes, Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you, Patricia, and all the staff for making these meetings run smoothly. I want to thank the mayor for appointing Counselors Anderson, Gonzalez, and myself to be on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate the fact that our business community and a diverse array of stakeholders are a part of this, which is really important if we want buy-in from multiple perspectives. And I would encourage folks, if you want to participate, there are opportunities to provide public input. Simply go to SalemClimateActionPlan.com. You can submit input and register to receive updates. And of course, all of our meetings are streamed online, so you're welcome to follow along. But thank you, Patricia, and to all the other city staff for making this happen. We appreciate it.
And for me, thank you to you, Counselor. This is, I know, a big ask to be involved in this larger group and this complex of problem. We look forward to you guiding us through this issue as it, as it moves onto our table. So thank you. Tom?
Yeah, one more thing for Counselor Stapleton and everyone else. We are working with a consultant firm, Verdis Consultant Firm, and this is a firm that has done these sort of plans all across the country. So they're very familiar with it. They're, they've got a whole lot of expertise. Just for an example, the 41 consultant member task force was picked by, chosen by staff members and the mayor because Verdis said, we need somebody from this community. We need somebody from this segment. We need somebody from that segment. So they gave us just a broad outline of here's all the community members that we need to